Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals for the public hearing for April 21st, 2015. We'll begin with the special order calendar. Continued hearing items, item number 135-10 B.C., 144 11, 77th Avenue, Queens.
Richard Limb and Shelton Limb, P.C., for the applicant. Good morning. I'm Chair. We have a representative at the executive session. We first want to reiterate to the board that we understand the seriousness of the violations here. And although we are a nonprofit applicant in a synagogue, the truth is that the synagogue, the leadership now is not, does not have any interest in allowing or condoning attendance in this building without, you know, in contrary to law or in an unsafe manner. So I just wanted to update the board. We're on a very short lease, which we understand, which we should be because we need to show movement on this. Apart from the zoning issues, apart from the variance, really, just with regards to the code enforcement here and Department of Buildings' role. So since the time of the last BSA hearing, the applicant had a very serious discussion internally and wants to move forward with Department of Buildings, has a meeting scheduled for this coming Thursday with the deputy commissioner, and is going to, at that time, offer a payment plan for the outstanding DOB penalties, where they are going to offer a sizable payment up front and then are going to be put on a monthly payment plan with DOB. This has already been arranged with Department of Buildings. So that meeting is scheduled for Thursday, I believe, the 23rd.
And so DOB is going to be the collection agency as opposed to the department of finance?
We understand that DOB will be the collection agency. We can confirm that back to the board. Upon payment of these civil penalties, we understand that Department of Buildings will allow work to proceed in accordance with previously approved plans. And I say previously approved plans because my understanding from the applicant here is that in 2011 pursuant to job 42011308, that was the new, last new building application. It's 42011308. That was the last new building application which was approved by Department of Buildings. It was grant, the permits were granted in November of 2011. The current application seeks an amendment of those plans which will reflect changes made to the layout, partition work, et cetera, that do not affect the shell of the building. They don't affect the overall square footage. They basically affect the fact that there were storage units put in or storage areas. There was a change in the rabbis' offices. There are those type of changes which are an alteration to the existing plans, but that the integrity of those previously approved plans remains the same. So the Department of Buildings is now reviewing the amendment of that new building application, which was the last approved application on the property. I have with me representatives from the executive board of the synagogue as well as the project architect. And the other thing that I understand is that the board brought up ADA compliance at the last hearing. The new leadership of the synagogue understands that they need to comply and so are going to be installing an elevator for full access by all members of the congregation. So we're seriously addressing the violations. We're seriously addressing the elevator problems. We're seriously addressing the Department of Buildings' problems with regards to work without a permit. Because when you look at the violations that were issued here, you notice two things. The first is that almost all, if not all, the violations were issued to Yuri Pyroff, who was the former owner of the property, as well as the former contractor. And so the violations that, you know, that the current membership is addressing are, were really founded within a prior ownership of the shul. So they're taking their time to go through those and address those. And the second thing is that the majority of them right now address work without a permit. So my understanding from discussions with the architect and with the leadership is that while the partitions changed and the layouts changed, they can now go into Department of Buildings, show them the amended plans, and basically have DOB inspect with regards to the integrity of the work that was performed. Most of these violations are construction-related violations, which address work that went on without a permit. They, of course, need to certify back to DOB that the work was in compliance. If there were no permits issues, that it was at least in compliance with the approved plan. So when they enter into these discussions on the civil penalties, payment of those penalties, and reinstatement of the permits, they will address the ability of Department of Buildings to go in and inspect and ensure that all the work complies with what was set forth on the plan. So that's kind of the background.
Now, the plans that we have in our possession, are those the same amended drawings that DOB is currently looking at, or is there some intermediate step that we don't know?
There's the, there is, they are the plans that DOB is looking at. They're the ones that were forwarded to us by the project architect, who is, by the way, a new architect from, there's a, there was a prior owner, prior contractor, prior architect, and we're now on a new membership, new leadership, new architect, new contractor. So these are plans that were prepared with the new architect.
Okay. So when will the new plans be available with the elevator?
You know, I don't, do we know how, in two weeks?
And that's the only change that will be on those from the ones that we have?
Correct. That's the only, because the, from a zoning standpoint and as far as the conditions that the board placed on the prior approval, other than the inability to receive a certificate of occupancy, the plans actually substantially comply with the prior approval. So we didn't get our C of O in time, but as far as the general bulk provisions, as far as conditions, no catering, et cetera, those, you know, those are complied with. So the new plans will have the elevator. They will have beautification measures such as landscaping, which we need to add to the plans pursuant to comments from the commissioners. And those will be available in two weeks. But we appreciate the board's thoroughness in reviewing this. We echo the board's sentiments in wanting to create a safe environment. We thank the board for their understanding that this is a nonprofit. This is a synagogue. They're trying very hard to comply. And, you know, we're happy to come to the board in as short an interval as required in order to keep us in as close to compliance as possible.
So we're also reviewing for your substantial compliance from before as well, right?
Well, it's more, since we went for an actual amendment, then we're, you know, it's not a really substantial compliance.
Right, because you're starting sort of afresh.
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, it's a busy amendment.
Substantial compliance, and I was wondering who.
Yeah, no, it's just more of a.
Substantially compliant.
I didn't mean substantial compliance. I meant substantial compliance.
What about the use of the facility for religious activity?
The leadership has told me that they've informed congregants that there's a stop-work order. There was some confusion as to the stop-work order because I think the date on the stop-work order was, was, it was, it was an old date.
It's a vacate order.
A vacate, I'm sorry, the vacate order. So, but they've informed them that it's an act of vacate order and that, and that, you know, they, they should act accordingly.
So there won't be any religious activities at the, in the building?
That's, that's my understanding. I mean, they've, they've so informed the congregants.
Well, I don't understand that. They so inform the congregants, what's the meaning?
I think that they, I think basically that, that they've discussed the vacate order, the seriousness of the vacate order, and they've asked them not to use the synagogue during this time. They, they wanted to make sure that I expressed to the board that some of the congregants, you know, they have no personal control over some of these people, and so some of them have chosen to enter the building in violation of the vacate order?
Wait, wait, wait. It's called a lock on the door or a chain? That's how you keep people out who are not wanted?
We can, we can discuss, we can discuss that.
It's either you're keeping people out or you're not keeping people out.
Okay.
It's not like, oh, we ask you nicely not to come.
Understood.
Right?
Understood.
So, so a vacate order is still a vacate order until you have a conversation with the commissioner and, you know, the commissioner says otherwise. But at the moment, it sounds like there's still concerns.
I think, I think what, I think that, the reason I think that this is workable is that we experienced the same issues on the last, on the original variance application where there was a, there was a partial vacate at the time, and, and we basically were back at Department of Buildings. And at the time, Chair Srinivasan said, "We can't allow this building to be occupied during the dependency of these violations," much like the current chair. And so we basically brought Department of Buildings to the, to a point where they were comfortable enough that the borough commissioner wrote a, you know, wrote a letter basically advising that we were able to occupy in a limited capacity until such time as we were able to clear the violations and obtain our BSA variance application. So I think that the idea now would be that when we approach the Department of Buildings on Thursday for this meeting, that, you know, we'll instruct the applicant that, who is here, that they really should not be occupying prior to the date where the vacate is lifted.
Not, not shouldn't be.
Can't?
Can't. Won't.
Okay.
Right? Locked, with padlock, if that's what, I don't know what kind of pulls there are on the door, but I'm assuming those are the kinds you can put a chain around and nobody has a key. And when the commissioner says, "Yes, you can occupy," that's called a lift of the vacate order, right?
Right.
It's not just a little wink and nod.
No, no, no. It was, it was a, I mean, it was a document, it was a signed and sealed document produced by DOB.
But then, then they go into this and they lift the vacate order.
Right.
We need to see it lifted.
Sure.
Right?
I got it.
Otherwise, it's not lifted.
Doesn't mean anything unless it's actually lifted.
Understood. Okay.
I don't believe you have a second means of egress in the building, besides the front door. I mean, I went to the site and the rear exits are doors with no steps or stoops or anything. You can't use that, so I didn't see a second means of egress.
They're, they're supposed to build a back deck.
Yeah, but it's not in existence now.
Right. So for, that's a PAA, I mean, a public assembly violation, right? So you can't have more than 74 people in there in any event, but it's a vacate order, so vacate is vacate. That means not even one person.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. So we're able to produce the revised plans for the board within two weeks. And so whatever schedule the board wants to set, we're happy to comply.
Okay.
And by that time, we'll be able to report out on the DOB meeting as well.
When is your meeting with the?
Thursday.
Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay. So, and the drawings should be completed, we think, in two weeks?
Correct.
Is that realistic?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, so in that case, no, oh, yeah, yeah.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioner, Anthony Scuduto, representing the fire department. As requested by the board, we coordinated a reinspection or an inspection of the site. We couldn't gain access to the building with the Department of Buildings. On 4/14, the Department of Buildings reaffirmed the stop-work orders and complete vacate of the building. There is no record of any approval for partial access. There's no record for, and there's no approval of any access to correct any kinds of existing violations. As a matter of fact, if you look at the biz site, you'll see notation of the last action of complaint by the fire department requesting reinspection due to occupancy, possible occupancy. The inspection result as entered in biz is that they didn't observe any occupancy, but they did note that the postings for vacate and stop-work orders have been removed from the building. The building inspector reapplied the labels and the stickers relative to a full vacate and stop-work orders. Those notifications should be on the buildings. If they're not on the buildings, then we assume that they were criminally removed. It's on our radar. It's not our vacate, but we are concerned about the occupancy of this building. We have no idea of the design. We don't know what, we know that it's obviously not the original building. The, you know, the construction is relatively complete. We have to refer to the as-built plans or the current built plans and the modifications that are required. Bottom line, like Commissioner Montanez said, there's, there's no, there's no rear, you know, the doors open up to midair. There can be no occupancy. There's no, there is no letter in effect, and in effect, the fire department will enforce the vacate. We will be doing periodic inspections, and periodic means from day to day and not month to month. We will do periodic inspections of the buildings, and frankly, if the labels are removed, we believe that we will, we can get the Department of Buildings to hold the powers that be, whoever's in control of this building criminally liable. We do not want anyone in this building. It's not safe. And that's basically it.
Thank you very much.
So just to reaffirm, labels were reapplied to the building. There's a full vacate in effect. No one should be entering that building, and the labels should still be on that building. If they were removed, they were removed illegally. Thank you.
Thank you. Heard that?
Yeah, we heard that. The, well, first, we wanted to confirm that the labels were reapplied on Monday last week and have since remained on the building. So we just wanted to, and we, and we understand the fire department's concern, had spoken to, I think it was John Yakavone, prior to this time, said that, who said the Department of Buildings had done their own inspection. But we, the message received.
Okay. So in terms of the submission, it's going to include a photograph of the front door with those postings intact?
Right.
Right? And no steaming off for the photo op? Okay, are there any speakers on this item? Anybody else have any comments on this? Okay. So if you could then, so submit on, can you submit on May 7th? Is that too soon for the drawings?
It's my birthday.
You're not doing the drawings, he is. Why, you take off for your birthday?
Maybe. One more week? Oh, he's asked for one more week, the project architect.
Okay. So it's just because of the hearing schedule, so in that, because the next hearing really is June 2nd. So if you submit it on May 14th, then it would be for a hearing on June 2nd.
Okay. 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 Thank you, Madam Chair.
New cases, item number 2, 120766 B.C., 305 Washington Avenue, Brooklyn.
Good morning. I'm Carl Soffaro, I'm the attorney for the owner of the store. This application involves a retail store on the same zoning lot as a three-story residential use in condominium ownership. It's fair to say we have not had, over the years, the cooperation of the condo board of managers, resulting in numerous inability to address maintenance issues pertaining, mostly with the residential building, which have precluded the issuance of a C of O on the last go-around, and other deficiencies on the property itself. We're trying our best to get their cooperation, but they have not been forthcoming with this. It's impossible to get a C of O without being able to have inspection and access to the residential units on the lot, which have not happened at this time, and were noted as deficiencies in the application for C of O on the last go-around. There is a, as you see, a violation from landmarks for the sidewalk, which was sloppily done in the, in the, in the front of Washington Avenue, right in front of the residential building. Failure to maintain the planting area alongside of Decalb Avenue as well as in the front of Washington Avenue. Local law 62 violations, many, many years, as well as lack of carbon monoxide detectors in some of the units themselves. So it's been very difficult for the store owner to make good on these issues, which really feel fall within the purview of the residential condo board of managers. Nonetheless, we're trying to prevail upon them to budget money so that they can do the necessary maintenance. You know, we'll assist where we can because we really want to get a C of O and move on with this. But failing that, it's, it's very difficult to, to tell you that we'll be able to accomplish everything that's going to be needed to get a new C of O. First step, of course, is to request an extension of term, which has expired, I think, for a number of years now.
The plantings, though, I thought, were the responsibility of the shop.
I think it's not a problem of putting some additional plantings. You see a space along the side of.
There's two big concrete planters and a tree in front of the store.
Yes, we maintain those.
And that can all be maintained by the store owner.
We do that. We do that.
There weren't any plantings when I was there.
I don't know when you went. When I took the pictures, you see them in there, but.
Well, maybe they died over the winter, but it should be.
Then we should replace them, and we will do that. We might have to assist in getting some of the plantings done along the side of Decalb Avenue and in the front.
It's sporadic at best, actually, the maintenance of the, I, I pass there frequently and used to actually frequent the store a lot. And it's, it's sporadic, those, you know, the plantings. It does.
That's right.
They may have put pots, but frankly, I don't remember seeing anything that was really significant in them. So, you know, I don't know whether you need to sort of tell your client that they need to keep these things up or, or put something in there that, you know, will last through the seasons, you know, some.
Well, that was my suggestion as well.
Like a conifer of some kind in there that, you know, you don't have to worry about. It just sort of takes care of itself.
That was my suggestion as well, and I think we can do that in those areas where you see a lack of planting in the side and also in the front of Washington Avenue. And there's also a maintenance issue. It doesn't seem to me that anyone in the building is taking the pride in cleaning that area or maintaining it. The grass runs wild there in the summer, and people just aren't doing their job.
Right. So the shopkeepers are responsible for their own frontage, right?
I would believe so. I mean, it's very difficult to get them to, you know, go beyond that and bear the expense of that. And of course, once you do that, then the residential owners don't feel responsible to do anything to maintain the building. As a matter of fact, when they submitted for a C of O, 10 of the 12 objections that were raised had to do with maintenance issue, ordinary maintenance issues, including smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors that are missing in the building. And they feel that since you're the one that's applying for a C of O, you pay for all this. Very difficult to enforce that.
Maybe we reach out to enforcement at DOB and see if we can handle it from that side. Not sure exactly how effective that will be, but.
Well, the expediter had mentioned a possibility that now this is a condo building, if we have a separate tax lot for the store, we might be able to consider an application dealing only with the store and possibly a separate C of O for the store itself and leave the enforcement issues to the.
There's only one exception for a partial certificate of occupancy, and it wouldn't apply here.
Yeah. Well, okay.
It was a thought.
All right. Well, we will do our thing with the Department of Buildings. I'm not sure, other than sending a note to the owners, not really sure what our control is.
Maybe DOB, if forces heavily, maybe it would be an incentive.
That's still timeframe-wise, you know, they get a violation next week, they may, VCP won't hear it for three months. They might adjourn it.
No, I'm not suggesting it has an effect on this, but how do you get people who are scofflaws to do something unless they're here for, they need something?
Yeah, there are other things that would prevent them from getting a C of O that aren't in, you know, the, the store's purview. So it's a difficult situation.
As far as the store itself, we realize we have to put an upgrade to a handicap bathroom. We're willing to do that. We have the room for that, and that can be accomplished. And I think it was only the issue of the functionality of the exit signs that they'd be made illuminated and kept that way. Those are easy things to do, and, you know, we don't have any problem with doing that prior to applying for a C of O.
Right. On your plans, there was a notation, I think it had to do with the sprinkler system, that part of the store is sprinkled and then another part is not. And there was this notation that said, "Existing system not existing." But I mean, if you could look at the plans, I think it means sprinkler system not existing.
I have to.
But it was not really, didn't make sense.
I don't recall offhand, but I'll, I'll look into them.
Okay.
Okay. So, I'm wondering, so.
Let me provide you the information as to the ownership and the contact person there that I've been speaking with for over a year now. And if you want to reach out to them, we'd appreciate that. And meanwhile, I'll ask for some time to respond to the issue on the sprinkler system.
Okay. So, I mean, what we try to do is, to the extent that there are violations related directly to your premises, that you get that done before grant?
I think that can be done.
Okay? So if you could.
Not looking at extensive work there.
Okay.
We're anxious to get this done so that we qualify for the C of O.
Right. Okay. All right. So what do you think in terms of timing to accomplish?
I would like to have in, towards the end of June.
Okay. Are there speakers on this? So then, if you could submit, for example, let's see, June 25th, does that sound right?
That's fine.
With proof that you've installed or made those corrections, that will give us some time to reach out to DOB and things like that.
Madam Chair, I wonder if the applicant could go through all the required items that are holding up the C of O and indicate which are within your purview, which are within the condo for the residences, and then we can understand.
Okay, I'll work from the list. There's printout available on the website of what the results were of the last inspection. We'll add to that and.
Actually, it would help if you submitted that earlier, like as soon as possible.
This week.
Yeah, that would be great. Then, then at least there's something to have a conversation with DOB about quite specifically. And then, but if you submitted on the 25th of June for a hearing on July 14th?
Okay. We can do that.
Is that all right? Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appeals calendar, decision items, item number 3, 184A, 332 West 44th Street, Manhattan.
Okay, we were just going to reopen this and then adjourn, right? So for a motion to reopen, Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Oakley Brown?
Aye.
And we're just going to adjourn this until next week, 4/28.
Continued hearing items, item number 4, 131 11A through 133 11A, and 159 14A through 161 14A, 464 468 Arthur Kill Road, and 120 Pemberton Avenue, Staten Island.
Good morning, Madam Chair. From review session, I understand there are a few questions that were raised that hopefully we can address. First, regarding the most recent submitted site plan and some of the dimensions, I realize there is a dimension that would have been helpful there to show the 30 by 30, but just to clarify, the, the space requested by the fire department is there. All the dimensions are accurate, however, the new paved space, two dimensions are shown, approximately 53 feet and approximately 50 feet 10 inches going from east to west. And then there is 30 feet going from the edge of the lot down to the, the lot line of the southernmost building. The 30-foot dimension that's shown up top just wasn't shifted when they adjusted the curb cut. However, if you look at the parking space, the parking space generally 18 feet in length, if you subtract that from the smaller dimension, the 50 feet 10 inches, it still leaves 32 feet 10 inches. So there is a 30 by 32, 33-foot space there.
Sorry, where's the 50 feet 10 inches?
If you look, there's a 50-foot 10-inch, the one parking lot that's off to the side above the words Pemberton Avenue, next to 4022. Above that, there's a dimension, 50-foot 10 inches, that runs from one side of the pave to the other pave.
It does? We see 30.16?
So 30.16, it's perpendicular to that.
Perpendicular.
Perpendicular, it's, it's in a lighter font, and it's 50-foot 10 inches.
Wow. Not on our version.
If I can just, do you see it?
But it includes the depth with the parking space.
It does.
So you have to subtract 18 feet.
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
So if you subtract that 18 feet, it would still yield 32 feet 10 inches. We'll add that dimension to the plan.
But you know, sometimes I've, we've seen the plan where you actually, like, diagonal or somehow mark out the frontage.
We can submit a supplemental plan to, to show, but it is, it is.
Because I thought you were measuring it from the 30, and the 30, which included like half of the parking space.
Correct. That 30-foot dimension there was left in by the architect from the previous plan. I would say, we'll strike that from the next plan.
Yeah, that shouldn't be there.
It's, it's a very accurate measurement. It just doesn't show us anything of note at this time.
I think we're still a little confused.
Yeah.
If I can.
Yeah, can you please show us? We're only seeing 30, and then next to it is 12.6 in parentheses.
This is the parking lot? This is 50.10, which runs from here to here.
Oh, that?
Yes.
We don't have that.
Oh, it must be on the other plan.
You're on the attorney radius plan. You're looking at the original site plan.
The attorney radius was a separate plan. The attorney radius was a separate plan.
Oh, okay, okay.
And then if this is 18 feet, that would leave 32 feet.
Oh, okay, so the parking is outside of the 30. Oh, okay, good, got it. Thank you.
Nope, that's fine. And we'll submit another plan, removing the confusing 30-foot dimension, showing the 32-foot 10-inch dimension, and then it'll be clear that there's at least a 30-by-30 space there.
Did you put a notation for no parking signs on Pemberton so that you can, you'll always have that 30 feet wide?
There wasn't a notation for the no parking sign because it goes to the fact that there were other issues, you know, beyond the dimension. I realize that there were comments made about the Department of Transportation and the most recent response. We can put in no parking signs, however, I think it's important to note that this area right here is essentially a driveway. It's not a continuation of Pemberton Avenue. It's always intended as driveway and access to Lot 36, which is the northernmost lot. The idea all along was not to encourage drivers to go into this space because it is private property, it is a driveway, it's not intended to be a continuation of Pemberton.
No, I understand that. It's just that you've got, you'll have a dropped curb, right?
Right, correct.
And if a car is to park, let's say, on this side of Pemberton.
Sure.
They're going to encroach on your curb cut, and then if you've got somebody, it doesn't look like they're going to necessarily encroach on the other side, on the, you know, upper side of Pemberton Avenue if they park there, but I think clearly if they park on that lower portion, you are, you're, they're going to be in your curb cut.
Right.
So you're not even going to realize, you know, a 30-foot curb cut.
So, we understand, I mean, how's this, we're very willing to post no parking signs. The concern that we have, though, is once you start to post street signs, people may
take them down.
May take it, may, will take, will may take it also to be a street. And the idea all along was, this has always been a driveway. It's not intended for access for the public.
Well, it'll just probably, I mean, it'll probably say no parking beyond this point.
That's fine. We'll figure out something, we'll put something there, but I just want to say that that's.
Otherwise, all of this work you've done is if somebody parks there.
Fair enough. So we can post it over, I think that ideally to the two sides where the paved are, we can put a no parking sign at the end of, I think, the easternmost sidewalk.
Yeah.
And then the western sidewalk, just to say no parking beyond this point, just to keep that space clear. Sure.
Right, that makes sense.
No problem.
But I mean, there is a reason why there's this turnaround there. Emergency vehicles, trucks that sort of get stuck, right, that need to have a better way to turn around.
But I would say that what we're presenting is an improvement upon what's currently there. I mean, currently, there, there's space there, the vehicles coming down at this point don't have any means to turn around, and we're providing in our private property, in our driveway.
Yes.
Some sort of access for people to turn around. So we understand the point, but that, the idea of this all along was not to encourage a stream of traffic to that particular.
Right, understood, understood, right. But at the same time, you don't want to block it all so that what's created.
Fair enough, sure.
Now, you're thinking of putting no parking beyond this point at the end of Pemberton, near the curb cut to the property?
Uh, we.
Because you have a parking space inside, which is required. So I'm just wondering how that's going to work.
We.
No public parking.
No public parking. I think we put a no public parking.
Like on the street so that it won't block.
Or private property, no public parking beyond this point.
Private driveway, right.
Private driveway.
Private drive, no public.
Done. I love that sign, we'll go with that one.
There you go. It sounds more elegant if it's a private.
It really does. So private driveway, we'll post it there, and that'll take care of concerns with access.
You can charge more money for the house then. They'll have a private drive.
With respect to the Department of Transportation, I do believe that we've received letters from them noting that they are planning to widen Arthur Kill to its full extent. We are proposing no construction within Arthur Kill, so they're free and clear to do that. And I think that the most recent letter did say that Pemberton Avenue is not in the capital plan. So we believe that Department of Transportation responded in full to all the questions of the board, and we wouldn't need any additional information from Department of Transportation. With respect to the drainage plan, just to provide some clarification with the architect letter, the reason that we were requesting the particular condition before the certificate of occupancy was a combination of factors. It is the cost of completing the drainage plan, it's the time involved in the drainage plan process. When the architect put that 18 months in there, that's really the full process, it's the review, it's the administrative review, it's meeting with D E P, it's working out alternatives. And adding in that 18 months before they can even begin other construction just further delays this project, which was originally filed in 2011, and because of various delays with agency reviews, with the Department of Buildings adding in the garages, this project's been a long time coming. So the property owner is really hopeful of proceeding as soon as possible. But there's also the concern with construction financing, and typically, construction financing's not available until permits are issued. So it's this additional cost before construction financing can come forth with this project. So the reason we were requesting this particular condition before the certificate of occupancy is we believe it still would provide protection to the public interest, that the drainage plan would be amended before final certificate of occupancies could be issued, the city would be protected, it would allow the property owner to proceed both along construction and drainage plan amendment concurrently. We don't believe that it would cause any detriment at all to the city, and it would provide great benefit to the property owner, and there would be protections in place. So.
Maybe I'm, and Commissioner Montanez can help me with this one, right?
Sure.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding, but a drainage plan isn't just a plan, it's not just a piece of paper that's approved by an agency. It means that you're affecting the landscaping and where you put your trench drains and things like that. It's actually results in construction, correct?
Sure.
So, when you get a certificate of occupancy, you've already moved in, the couch is already there, people don't wait to get certificates of occupancy before they move in, right, even though they're supposed to. It's totally done. The bushes are in. So then, if you're not getting your drainage plan until right before certificate of, approved, until right before your certificate of occupancy, when are you going to be making these changes to the landscape that's already been installed?
Well, the way I look at it is, you know, D E P's letter was a little, to me, ambiguous because they were talking about the possibility of being able to change the drainage plan. And the way I look at it is that they have a drainage plan on file.
Correct.
They're planning on redoing Arthur Kill Road, that's going to entail a lot of, you know, maybe storm sewers and sanitary sewer work. They have an idea that this is going to, this is something they're going to be able to install. You can't wait like three years and then tell them, oh, we want to modify that. They're working on it now. So that was one of the reasons why I thought they might be very concerned about waiting a few years to modify the drainage plan because they're probably planning to open Arthur Kill Road to a greater extent and add these other, you know, things coming in from the side streets. So it doesn't seem accurate to wait for three years or whatever.
But what I would say to that is that the issue's always consistently expressed by the Department of Environmental Protection. They've always, through the prior application and approval, they said you can amend the drainage plan. Through this application, they've always said you can amend the drainage plan. I agree, there was a little bit of a different language in the small street language, but they always said.
Different language, right.
However, all along, the only thing they've ever requested was the 35 feet within Pemberton Avenue. Their concern has been the portion of the drainage plan in Pemberton Avenue. It's not the portion in Arthur Kill. And we're not in Arthur Kill whatsoever.
But where do you think the sewers from Pemberton are going to connect to? They're connecting to Arthur Kill. If there's going to be a change, they have to know that.
And we can work with that change while we're working on the construction.
If they're planning a storm sewer system, you can't come three years from now and say, oh, well, you can't put this little part in here, if that was something they were planning for. The whole system is very intricate in terms that it runs on gravity, and, you know, you can't just like, oh, we'll go down this street instead because it might be going uphill, and it might not be possible. So, you know, I think you have to inform D E P as soon as possible.
The flip side of this, though, is that when I speak about the capital plan in Arthur Kill and any concerns you're expressing, if I recall right, they're not starting this until 2018, and to require our property owner to wait until 2018, when this was filed in 2011.
They're not requiring that. No, no, no. So this, so let's see if there's a way to make a compromise with this. That there's a certain amount of work done prior to permit and a certain amount of work done prior to C of O. I mean, that means it's running simultaneous with construction. This is a year and a half construction project, right? So if you make the recommenda, if you do the drawing, that doesn't take a year and a half, it takes a month, it takes two months, you do the drawings that submitted, are submitted to D E P, and D E P reviews them, you're still in that pre-permit stage. I doubt that, I don't know, construction documents done on this project?
I believe some may have been started already.
Started.
Again, because we have the site plan. We understand the concerns. If we could propose, put forth potentially a condition saying, you know, if the board ran the resolution and put a condition in saying that prior to obtaining permits, we file an application with D E P to amend the drainage plan, to at least confirm that we've started the process, and then prior to obtaining the C O, the drainage plan must be.
Approved.
Must be approved. So if we did filing and approved, maybe that addresses D E P concerns, the board concerns, because I think then that would allow us to pay the $2,000 filing fee, put in the application, but not be penalized waiting 18 months or longer while everything else is going on.
Well, at least, you know, make it formal that this is what you intend to do.
That's fine. I think we'd be very willing to, to a condition, filing prior to permits and then amended prior to C O.
Madam Chair, I wonder if we could do prior to temporary C of O, because D O B would issue a temporary.
Right.
And there's an incentive to do it because they definitely can occupy the building without a temporary.
Right.
If we do it final, then they might get the T C O and stay at that stage.
Right.
So temporary would ensure that they would, something is done.
So filing prior to permit and plan before T C O.
Mm-hmm.
It seems like that's a reasonable compromise.
Thank you.
Nothing like compromise.
And I think everyone would be happy to close a case with a 2011 calendar.
Yeah. Sorry, just wanted to.
I guess that was a suggestion.
Okay, so let's see. So I think then the only submission would be revise your statement to state that, right?
And we can represent, submit a revised site plan saying private driveway and moving that 30 feet over to be 32 feet.
Good deal. Are there any speakers on the side? Okay, so I think we could actually close this, yes?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Leary Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so we set a time for submission.
This plan we could get in within a week.
Really?
Sure. I mean, we just have to shift the dimension, and the statement should be simple enough to change.
Okay, so if you could submit on May 7th? Oh, sorry. Yeah, May 7th.
7th?
Oh, in a week, really in a week, that would be May 1st. You want to do that?
If we're, when would the decision be for May 7th? If we did May 7th, would the decision be the 21st?
The decision would be May 12th.
That's fine. Let's do submit May 7th decision, May 12th if that works with the board.
No, actually, May 7th doesn't work.
Okay.
That's too soon.
Submit May 1st?
Submit April 30th. Wait. Submit April 30th, May 12th hearing. I mean, sorry, the decision, May 12th.
We can do that for sure.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
Item number five, 9514A, 237 East 72nd Street, Manhattan.
Good morning, I'm Bernard Morrison, I represent the owner of the third-floor apartment, and I'm seeking a variance. This is a continuation of a hearing from September 23rd, which I made a resubmission in which I've tried to follow the recommendations, suggestions of the board and the fire department. And I attended the executive session yesterday, and I'd like to just skip right now and discuss the items that came up at the executive session. Number one was the zoning is R 10. It is indeed R 10, and it was an error, I apologize for the error, but it's of little consequence, as R 10A allows for a greater floor area than 8B.
No consequence, but inaccurate, so you need to fix your statement.
Yes, I will fix it, indeed, I will fix it. I ought to point out that R 10 provides for a slightly greater floor area per dwelling unit, but the arithmetic still works, 3981 square feet divided by the 790, which is required under R 10, still allows slightly over five units. The bulkhead ceiling should be a two-hour rating, I'm prepared to make that change, and I will do that. Winders on the second floor. You know, I made a number of safety changes, including eliminating the winders just before you get to the third floor. It was difficult to change the winders on the second floor without intruding into the apartment on the second floor. I would have to redo the kitchen, so I was hoping that the safety features without removing the winders on the second floor would suffice.
Okay, so that's a Department of Buildings and a fire department call, really, not ours.
We could.
What?
We could make a determination.
We could make a determination, but I would really like to hear from the fire department. It's like, I don't know how many winders there really are.
There are four winders on the second floor. They're existing, they're legal.
I don't know what the depths of the winders are, like what's the tread depth?
It varies, of course.
Yeah, but what's the.
I think it, it seems pretty wide as it gets to the wall, and of course, it's narrow when it gets to the construction point. I'd say they're legal winders, legal in the old sense.
Legal in the old. What's happening?
Let's say this, I can make that change if insisted on. It means going into the other apartment, changing their kitchen and so on, I would hope that it would not be required.
Yeah, well, so we'll have the fire department look, because that's probably you get the inspection.
Among the other issues that were mentioned were fire stopping details. I specify fire stopping as per the Department of Buildings. However, I have no problem in adding some details, and I'll do that. Spiral stair legal, yes it is, in the New York State Code, 26-inch width is required, and I will do that. As for machines on the roof, there is one existing air conditioning unit on the roof which serves the third floor, which we go, it shows incidentally on the existing plans, on the roof plan, we're going to remove it and replace it with window units.
Oh.
Now, it was mentioned this aspect of one-third of the area of the roof, but this deals with what counts as a floor. In other words, we exceed one-third of the roof area, but it is a floor, so it's an irrelevant, it's irrelevant. We are adding a floor. The door to the roof is three feet, is a three-foot door, and it goes into a passageway that's three foot three.
Yeah. Sorry, can we just go back to the one-third? The reason that there's this one-third roof area concept, and again, the fire department really needs to weigh in on this, is that the roof, the final floor on which there is a roof to stand, has to do with access by the fire department and by tenants who run for egress, right, in the event of a fire. So when you reduce, unless your bulkhead goes up to the roof of the penthouse and then allows that to be the roof, you've essentially reduced the area of refuge, the area the fire department can come on to work, et cetera. That's why there's a difference between a penthouse and another floor, because if there's another floor, there's a roof on which you have access because the bulkhead goes to that floor. goes to that floor. So you're sort of neither here nor there. That's why if, if we're to allow an increase in the one-third rule, we have to feel confident that there, the firefighters and the tenants have adequate access to the roof area.
Well, I show a three-foot door going to the roof area. That passageway is three foot three inches wide.
Because it shows 210 on the drawing.
The 210 is the width of that little stairway that goes over the beam. The passageway is three foot three, and I'll add that dimension.
All right, so we'll talk about that more.
Just, I think you should verify compliance with the Fire Code. That's the, that's the key. It's not about the building code measuring whether it's one-third, or less than one-third, a floor, a story, not a story. It's Fire Code compliance with regard to obstructions on the roof.
Well, all right. The last thing deals with the explanation of the horizontal, the limitation of horizontal expansion. Now, I would say it, again, that the, the floor cannot be expanded horizontally, because there's a property line on the east and the west, and on the south, and on the north. To expand horizontally would intrude into the real lot line, none of which is permitted. So horizontal expansion is not practical.
Does that answer your...
Yeah, I mean, it's, it does answer it, but you should, what we've always had previously, is that we also talk about the expense or what would need to be retrofitted. Not the difficulty as per zoning requirements, but also the difficulty in terms of enlarging building structure. And all it has to do is be a couple of sentences of detail.
You mean...
So, but, so wait a second. Are you saying that is simply not permitted?
Yes.
So you couldn't do it?
Right. They're saying it's just, for zoning requirements, it's not permitted.
Right.
It goes against zoning requirements. But usually, what we've had is also a discussion about the structural complications involved. And it doesn't have to be a long discussion. It's just, just talk about what the structural complication would be, if you had to enlarge a floor in the middle of the building where you've got no structure underneath it.
Well, you, if we expand it into the, into the rear yard, which is illegal, we would have to build a structure to support that...
Just put those sentences in, that's all. Just...
Do you want me to add those sentences?
Right. Don't leave it to instinct to figure it out. That's all.
Okay. Well, once more, I, I will make these changes. I await whatever you want to tell me about the one-third area related to the Fire Department. We exceed that.
Do you know by how much? Do you know what percentage your lot, your coverage is?
It's 890. I'd have to, I'd have to change the plan to reduce it by about, I'm guessing, 60 square feet.
Oh. So can you verify what the coverage is? Because I don't think we had the information.
It's 892 divided by a third is 296 or so. So I'd have to reduce it by about 60 square feet.
Uh-huh. So where would that come out of, if you were...
I would say I'd make a smaller bathroom, and I would, I would cut back on the, cut back on that little room. The, the main room.
All right, so let, let's hear from the Fire Department, and if they're ready. I'm not sure if they had a chance through.
Good morning. Madam Chair, Commissioner Anthony Scudino, representing the Fire Department. First, I'd like to thank the applicant for making all of those changes. We appreciate the response, and we're very happy. With reference to what was discussed today, in, in terms of the treads on the second floor, we will defer to buildings on that. If it complies with current code, we believe that we can work around, you know, if we need to, you know, get access to the stairways. We defer to building code on that. That's not, it's not a major safety issue for those winders. With respect to the corridor accessway, we would ask the applicant to see if he could just maintain that three-foot-three width that's designed. So the, the little steps that is used to rise above the beam, if he could just somehow, I don't know if you have railings installed or whatever it is, but if we could maintain at least that 36 inches, we'd appreciate that. That, you know, that's the minimum requirement.
So it's 39 and then 36 when you have the stairs? Is that what you're saying?
It's a minimum 36 inches. That's what we would want. So he's at 210. If he could somehow buy two inches, that would, you know, that really would satisfy us. We, because if we have roof activity, and, and we require access to the building, it's really for rescue. So there's a minimum amount of equipment that really would be needed to be brought into that corridor. So we, we believe that if he just maintains 36 inches, we, we would be satisfied with that. Relative to the, the question about the area in terms of the roof, it's not so much the third, the one-third. I think if you address this concern, it may actually satisfy the board's question about the one-third of the roof. By moving the penthouse forward, basically, you're, you're giving, we're approaching the building from the front. We would be accessing the building above the penthouse floor. So if there's, I don't know if there's a parapet wall or whatever, but in a sense, the Fire Department will be working from the penthouse roof, and not the rear roof, where, where, in a sense, it's designed as the area of refuge. But in, what we would actually look for, for people to be able to move from that area of refuge at the rear, to the penthouse roof. So what we would want to see, and would be, would satisfy, satisfy us in terms of access, as well as the ability to get to people, it would be a wide, fireproof, metal stairway leading from the rear area of the third-floor roof, allowing people to access the penthouse roof. And we believe that that's more than enough area for us to access the building, as well as remove, because if we're going to be removing people from the roof, it's going to be from the penthouse roof, not from the rear of the building.
Okay.
So a stairway from that, the third-floor roof to the penthouse roof would satisfy that. And other than that, we have absolutely no other...
And the only other way to modify, to change that would be to move the whole penthouse back?
Back.
Then you're accessing from the...
Right. Then, then, you know, then, then it would be just a mirror image. But in terms of this design, we really have no objection, other than we need access from the penthouse roof to the third-floor roof in the rear.
Okay.
And free movement. So if it be a wide stairway, metal stairway, you know, wider than 36 inches, it would help us in terms of moving people, as well as us, and whatever equipment we do need to get up there.
So when you say wider than 36...
You know, you have, you have the, the entire width of that bathroom wall. I mean, rather than, we don't want, let's, let me backtrack. I don't want a scuttle. What we want is a stairway. That's, that's, that's the one thing that we're requesting. A scuttle ladder is just not going to be adequate to move people from the rear roof to the, to the penthouse roof in terms of removing them, as well as, in an emergency situation, when we have a crew up on that roof, and we need to get down into the stairwell, we don't want to have to work with scuttle ladders. So if we have some kind of open stairway. If, if we need a number, I would prefer 48-inch minimum.
Mm-hmm.
But there's no code requirement. I'm just making that request.
Okay, great. Thank you, sir.
I thank you.
Are there any speakers on this? Okay. So it seems as if the only way in, that you could avoid that big staircase, which has obviously taken a lot of your recreational space away, is if you shifted the penthouse, flipped it, right? So that the...
I think I'll build a staircase.
Okay. Okay. So, so then, and, and to make this minimum 36-inch wide at the stairs that go over your beam, or whatever that you're doing?
Yes, I have a note of that.
I don't know what that is. Okay. So if you could amend the plans to show those things?
I will, indeed.
And, and then a notation on the drawings about the winder, DOB to approve second-floor winder?
Okay.
And what was the other one we said? The spiral stair also. If you could just put a notation at the spiral stair, DOB to approve spiral stair?
Okay.
And you'll make the notation that the ceiling of the stair, the main stair become, is fire-rated, is...
I will, indeed. All right.
Okay. Good. Any other things like that? Very good. Okay, so you made it. Thank you for making the changes.
Well, thank you for all your suggestions. They're very helpful. Yours, too.
So, so we can close this? So for motion to close?
Chair promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
And how much time to make the changes to the drawings?
I'm going away this weekend for three weeks, but I could do it before the weekend if I...
Okay.
But I...
But you have to submit, right?
And I'll, I'll submit. I'll do all these things before I submit. But I'll be away at your next meeting on May, what is the date?
I don't know. So if you submitted the end of this week, we could have a hearing on, we could have a hearing on May 12th.
But I'm away on May 12th.
I mean, it's a decision on May 12th. You don't have to be here for the decision.
Oh, okay. I will do so.
If you want to be for the glory of it, then you...
I've had enough glory in my life.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so a decision on May 12th.
What's the submission date?
Decision May 12th, and submission date is Friday, the 24th of April.
Thank you. Zoning calendar to continued hearing items. Item number six, 22213BZ, 2472 Coney Island Avenue, Brooklyn.
Hello. Good morning, Madam Chair. Eric Palatnik. We attended your review session yesterday, and of course, Hiram Rothkrug is here. I'll ask Mr. Rothkrug to come up to the podium. As you know, after your last hearing, Mr. Rothkrug went out, and he did survey all of the surrounding properties, as well as surrounding parking spots on the street. He also reached out to the Department of Transportation to receive data from them relating to the community facilities, parking demands. And he also conducted a survey of an enterprise rental car on Coney Island Avenue. And Mr. Rothkrug has the results of his work.
Good morning, Hiram Rothkrug. If the board will give me a, a little leeway, like Counsel Rich LaBelle, it's my birthday today.
We heard that.
And, and, and when I woke up, I, I realized that, you know, I'm, I'm sort of getting old, and that a lot of the advertisements on television and radio are, they're, they're pointed directly at me. And, and that being said, I, I realize that getting old, sometimes you don't have as much energy as need be. And this application from our firm needed a little more energy than we were putting into it. And to that extent, we made a submission to the board that was incomplete, and as the board said, unreliable. So when we heard from the zoning examiner, Josh Saul, last week, that our submission wasn't going to be accepted, and that the case would be laid over or whatever, I was actually thrilled, because I realized that the document we had submitted to the board was not what it should have been. And to that extent, we, I offer my apologies to the board for having a submission that you spent time on and basically wasted your time on an incomplete submission, and I'm deeply sorry for that. Continuing, though, I have a submission here in, in my hand, that is, is a complete submission. The board, as you might recall, was not pleased with our previous submission. They thought that some of our trip rates and some of our previous cases were out of date, were old, were not comparable with the location of this facility, and, and that we should try to update our submission. So to that extent, we reached out for the community facility medical offices. We reached out to DOT, who have been doing studies and analyses of, of different uses in the city, one of which is medical offices. And that information's going to be in the revised secret manual that's going to come out in the next year or two. And in addition, the medical office facility rates are being used for the East New York rezoning, which is a major city planning initiative for the mayor for his affordable housing. So we reached out to DOT, and they provided us rates for medical office facility review in Brooklyn. And we've not only detailed that in our document, but we've also given you the contact information for who to call if you want the backup data from DOT. So those rates are in our, our document now.
Don't you have those rates, though?
We didn't have...
But you can give us the information you used.
Yes.
Because not only did the parking demand double, the peak period changed dramatically.
Right.
So it was just, it was very strange.
Okay.
Strange and unsupported by any evidence whatsoever.
I understand that. But this is, we got it directly from DOT. I have the contact information, and we'll reach out to get more information from them. But we also, you know, gave the board who to contact, and, and, you know, this comes directly from them. Additionally, we went out to an enterprise car rental establishment on Coney Island Avenue, and did three days of surveys there of their establishment. It's actually a little larger than what we're proposing. It's a 13-space facility, as opposed to the nine-space facility that we're proposing. We use their exact data. So if we wanted to prorate that establishment to ours, we'd actually require less parking than we're, we're generating. Right now, I think our parking is, we're showing a total accumulation of seven spaces for the car rental establishment. If we prorated the data from the enterprise that we surveyed, we'd only require four parking spaces.
Okay, can I ask a question? Now, that parking demand, is that for the rental cars, or for customers coming to rent a car?
That's, that's just for, for, for the rental cars.
So that includes the actual cars that are available for rent?
That's correct.
Okay.
That, that's correct. And we, we assume that employee parking, although we have a couple of additional spaces available for employee parking, but we assume that employees are parking off-site or using mass transit to come to the facility.
Why are you assuming they park off-site?
Well, because if, you know, you want to have parking for customers, and you want to have parking, you know, for the assigned cars, and there are only a couple of employees that are working in the car rental establishment, one or two at most, so...
But wouldn't they park on-site if they saw an available space? You'd be...
Well, no, not, not...
People aren't that heroic.
Not necessarily. But what I will say is that our total accumulation now, at, at, at the peak hour is 19 spaces.
Okay.
Between all, all the uses. Now, the uses have different peaking hours, but at the peak hour of all the uses, it's 19 spaces, and we're providing 23. So not only, you know, have we given you the parking accumulation, the trip data, but we've also backed up everything with, with, with backup data as well.
But those numbers don't include, as you said, any employees, right?
No.
It's just all customers?
It's all...
Well, it's medical office, employee, staff, though, right?
Well, that's not, he just said. He said, "No employees."
Is it no employees, or just car rental, no employees?
It's car rental, no employees. The other, the other thing, the other thing is cars. The other thing includes employees and staff.
It sounded like...
No, I, I understand. No, it's just for, for the car rental. We, we, you know, didn't include that.
So at the other Coney Island site, did you inquire as to where their employees did park, or whether it was customary for them to use mass transit?
We, we didn't. We didn't. But we, you know, we saw two, two employees there, and, and we don't believe that both of them are driving and parking on the lot.
But if you added two employees...
If we added two employees parking, we'd still have at peak hour...
So you should do that. You should say, "Two employees are going to park on the lot," because I find it impossible to believe that when you get to work and there's nobody in the parking lot, you don't park in the parking lot. You know, that's like, not a car culture response. Okay.
But we, we believe that we've essentially addressed, you know, the board's concerns, and provided backup data, and, from, from better sources than what the, the board previously considered.
Okay. And so the whole idea is that the last time you just had a bunch of numbers. So the numbers will be easily found in back, backup, in the backup, backup, in other words?
Easily found in a, a lot condensed and more weird or friendly.
Okay. Okay. But it's not just math done without any...
It's not math done. It's, it's actually coming from, from sources and surveys.
And the source and survey is provided. The actual, not a citation to the source, the actual, I can read the page in the source.
Yes. Well, I, I'm going to reach back to DOT to get their, to get their data.
The page and...
To get their backup.
Okay.
All right.
So I'll, I'll withhold a submission I have today, and just give me, give me, give me, give me a week, and, and I'll have, I'll, I'll have everything in.
Okay. So, you know, we all have birthdays.
Yes.
And normally, they don't initiate an apology for having done bad work. Usually, you feel good on your birthday, and accomplished, and all that stuff, right?
I, I...
Right, Richard?
Well, I, I...
It's not his birthday, yeah.
I, I, I like my presentation, and I'm glad about it anyway. So I feel good about that.
You have the best of the day. They make up for it all. So I, I really would prefer not to hear, like, then it's your, like, your naming day, or something like that, and, and then you apologize because so many... something like that and then you apologize because so many naming days later, you just can't keep track of the work that comes out of your office. So please keep track of the work that comes out of your office.
Those losing, memory loss days, that also applies. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. So, but I do think there is still this theme about the stackers.
Right.
Right.
And the change of use, this potential change of use, which is, we're supposed to be deciding.
We would have to come back to you for any change of use because we'd have a plan specific approval.
But it's not a good idea. I mean, it's all based on a good faith reliance that you're going to have these uses and this is the parking demand.
Right, so.
It's not a good idea to put in that we may change the use and we'll, you know, have stackers in store.
I think what we were trying to communicate simply to the Board is that, you know, they're building the building on spec and it's not leased up yet. And if it doesn't lease up for the medical offices, they may have to change the plan. That's all, in the future, come back and come back to the Board.
Isn't the area zoned for commercial facility?
It's zoned for C eight, it's a split district. It's a C eight, R five, so it allows a lot of different uses. That was the only thought, but I understand how it makes the Board, how it concerns the Board.
Wait a minute, the only commercial use on the, sort of pseudo-commercial use on the R district is community facility. If it doesn't lease up to community facility, what are your plans?
No, there was some community facility within the C zone as well. The R five is in the back portion of the lot. The parking was in the R five portion, but the building rests within the C eight. That was all, but I understand how the Board would not be comfortable with that. We would have to come back to the Board anyway. We're just proffering the explanation. That was all.
No, I think we made clear yesterday, stackers.
Okay, well, we spoke to the clients about it and we'd be happy to provide them and we could provide five stackers on top, one set of stackers.
Certainly got enough room for them.
Yeah, so we'll provide ones.
Double height space where you were only going to.
We'll provide ones.
Car.
Yeah, we'll provide one set of stackers on top of the five commercial.
One set of stackers?
Well, five stackers on each of the, five stackers on each of the five parks. So double the five commercial parking spaces to ten.
Good. Yes, good, all right. That would certainly limit the degree of the waiver, yeah.
I know, that was the request of the Board.
And anticipate the twenty-foot space that you have in there.
Yes.
And anticipates, well, I mean, you know, the safest way for you to do this is if the car rental company, which doesn't have a parking requirement, turns out not to work out, if you did a calculation based on retail, then we'd know how many spaces are required for retail, so.
Eleven.
Eleven, she happens to know the answer to that.
An environmental space. No, that's what I thought of.
Yeah, so you're very close to the ten at that point and they could take space out if they needed to, if that was the space they were going for. But I think they were thinking about upstairs, but we're okay with the five. We're okay with adding the stackers.
What about upstairs? Upstairs where?
With the community facility spaces, this is where the owner was thinking maybe the problem in the future and the commercial, where this community facility upstairs proposed. But it's, either way, it's no big deal. We're happy to provide and accommodate the five.
It only affects the waiver. It does. I don't understand, the waivers for the community facility.
Correct.
Ambulatory care.
Correct.
So how are they think, same sort of backwards thinking or something?
Well, they're just, they were simply thinking that if they took out the space, some of the space from the ambulatory, that that point, they would have to provide stackers to accommodate the parking demand for the space that they were getting the waiver on right now. And that's why they designed it like that, in case their business plan fails. They were coming up with a backup business plan, that was all. There's some spaces designated as community facility space in the building right now. Not, they were wondering in the future if they don't lease up all of the community facility space, which you're applying a waiver to now, that would switch to a commercial space that's not subject to the waiver and they would need more parking space. And that's why they designed it to accommodate more parking in the future if they should need it, if there's a change in tendency.
So then they're going to put in quintuple stackers?
They don't know. They're just, they were thinking for the future in case, any good business plan, had a backup business plan, that was their thinking.
I know we've asked this before, but couldn't, we have an affidavit from the owner that this is what he's planning to do.
Of course, yes, definitely. And I think you should have it in the file already, but we'll provide.
I don't know.
I don't know if we're seeing that, yeah. But it's been a while.
We'll provide that to you and we'll also provide the stackers on the five commercial space.
All right, so then, are there any speakers on this item? Okay. So we need a re-submission from Mr. Rothkrug and it better be good. And then you're making those adjustments.
Correct.
Okay, so, where are we? So you could submit on May 15th for a hearing on June 2nd?
That's perfect, thank you.
Item number seven, forty-four fourteen BZ, ninety-two Lake Street, Manhattan.
Richard LaBelle of Sheldon Nobel PC for the applicant.
You just wanted to adjourn this?
That's all.
May 19?
That's correct.
And submit on April 30th?
Correct. That's correct, thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Item number eight, ninety-four fourteen BZ, eleven fifty East Twenty-Second Street, Brooklyn.
Good morning, Dennis Delangelo, representing the owner. I attended the review session. I'd like to address some of the issues. What we're trying to establish here is the application of the twenty-foot rear yard with a multi-story building. The reason I gave those plans out, the Chair mentioned yesterday that the submission of April 9th only included three drawings. I have been told by staff previously and on that submission, only to bring in the superseded documents. The email reflected that also. I guess it was assumed that the previous submitted drawings would be available to the Board. What you have is a complete set of the proposed project. I've been told now that from henceforth, we will be submitting a complete set of proposed drawings, no matter how many drawings we're changing. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's not a henceforth, it's kind of like to make it easier. It'd be sort of like saying, "I only change page three on the statement of facts, so I'm only giving you page three in the statement of facts." You wouldn't do that because that would be nonsensical, right? So it's the same with drawings. It's got to be the whole set and then you tell us which things changed in the drawings.
And they would all be clocked in on that date?
Yeah. Because otherwise, it's very difficult for us to review three drawings over here and then go back to the set that's over here and say, oh, you know, it's not like there's any, plus now we're digital, so it's a pile of PDFs over here and a pile of PDFs over there.
I thought that was the purpose of the digital.
Yeah, but then you have to figure out how to combine the PDFs and that's your job.
Okay, well, what you have before you is a complete set of the P drawings.
Okay.
The comment by the Chair that the tables that I submitted in the new statement of findings, what I did here is I took all the Board cases within the four-hundred-foot radius diagram, which was used to establish the height of the building early on. What I've done here is I've also included now the depth of the rear yards of those particular jobs within the four-hundred-foot radius, area diagram, and the height of the building. And as you can see, we have twenty-two feet, three stories, twenty feet, five stories with a five-foot greenhouse, twenty foot, three stories. These are within the area. In fact, eleven sixteen East Twenty-Second is a project that I was involved with, which is a straight-up, three-story, twenty-foot rear yard with a garage in the back. The second listing were jobs that I pulled out of my projects that I was personally involved in, all interior lots similar to this, and I picked out only the ones with the three-story arrangement, not two-story, not whatever. And all of these have a twenty-foot rear yard, all of them have a three-story. These are obviously in the neighborhood, I can identify, I can put them on a map for you or what have you. But the point we're trying to make here, or I'm trying to make, is that all of these jobs were approved by this Board. In fact, most of the Board is still here. They were voted unanimously at the time and in each and every case, these three-story projects with the twenty-foot rear yard, no question of going beyond that, were found, that the Board found that the proposed enlargement will neither alter the essential character of the surrounding neighborhood nor impair the future use and development. Now, we're not, we're looking at altering the neighborhood character. These buildings are really the neighborhood character. These go back fifteen years, the list that I have, and I'm sure that I'm just one applicant and there are several, I'm sure there are more. The twenty-foot rear yard has been softened with the building. That was the reference that I think you pointed out. In the March submission, we modified the roof of the building on the third floor to make it a hip roof all around, so it's actually a two-story building. We modified the rooms upstairs that they would not have walk-up windows, they would have a skylight and a sloping roof so that the presentation at the rear of the building would be a two-story structure with a sloping roof. No dormers, no projections. We kept out at the twenty-foot rear yard line. The Chair suggested a four-foot setback. We submitted dimensions of the bedrooms on the second floor and not only the second floor, but the third floor. If we set back the building to four feet, which the Board is requesting, it'll change the second floor, but it'll also create problems on the third floor. Right now, we had a walk-up window, it was a normal sort of ceiling height, we dropped that down, we put in skylights, moving that back four feet, again, trying to keep the program for the building. And again, the program is for a family, they're going to be occupying the building, it's not a turnover, it's not a flip, whatever they call it. We are asking that the Board consider this arrangement, this presentation, as something that did not alter the neighborhood character in the past whatsoever. And we fail to see how the Board might determine that it will be altering the neighborhood character by its exception. We are presenting a two-story building at the rear. I pointed out all of the three-story buildings with twenty-foot rear yards that have been previously approved by this Board. It's sort of a pattern in practice, but it's also the neighborhood character. And the neighborhood character is the neighborhood. I mean, looking at the, if we have a one-story building next door, we're not going to consider that to be the neighborhood character. It's what you have next door is what you live with, what you dealt with. But as far as the, this particular project and its impact, I think we've pointed out that rear yards in this particular neighborhood, this is an extremely tight-knit neighborhood. Everybody knows who has two wash basins, who's got a circular stair. It's a tight community. And in my experience, they are willing to give up the rear yard, the open space, for the family living space, which is what's keeping them in this neighborhood. And the purpose of this zoning was to keep people in this community, which it has done very successfully. It's also been pointed out that these are not people that have a family barbecue in their backyard or wash their dog in the backyard. I haven't met anyone who has a dog in all of these projects, in all of the years. In fact, the photographs that have been submitted show the condition of these rear yards, they're just not used. They're not what you would consider in an urban design platform as open space and valued rear yards. I would ask that the Board might consider the new design with the twenty-foot setback at this point, and if not, I like the idea of compromise, there's nothing like compromise. That sounds really good. I spoke to my client and if the Board feels that the twenty-four-foot rear yard is something that they can't live without, I would then ask that the Board consider the original roof design, setting it back to four feet, but giving the third floor a walk-up window, going with the height setbacks of the zoning resolution. We would ask that we could cut back on the second floor, cut back on the third floor, but ask that the roof design present itself as originally proposed with a thirty-foot perimeter wall and a sloping roof coming back.
And why, what's the difference if it has a walk-up window versus not a sloping?
Well, we're compressing the building to give the four feet. And also the fact that this is a bedroom, these are bedrooms upstairs, they're legal bedrooms, the building's going to be sprinkled. Having a walk-up window facing west especially, as opposed to a sloping roof for the rest of eternity, these buildings, these people are going to live in this building, their children are probably going to live in this building. That's the nature of this community. What we do now, they're going to be living in and with, and the loss of the four feet is something that is hard to swallow, but again, there's nothing like compromise. We would ask then that the Board would consider bringing that rear wall up with a hip roof on it, complying with the height restrictions, but giving a walk-up window to that third floor bedroom.
Well, I think Mr. Delangelo has a good point in terms of that in the past, we generally looked at the street frontage in terms of analyzing neighborhood character more than the rear yard.
Right, but if we look at the rear yard, that's the reason for the focus, right? It'd be one thing if some of those cases were on the drawings of the one, two, three, four houses that are surrounding this one, but all of the houses have bigger rear yards with one-story incursions. So that's, that's the thing. You're having a direct impact on neighborhood character there. But because there's a twenty-four, and illegal nonetheless, but twenty-four-foot incursion, I mean, a twenty-four-foot rear yard already, it seems like that should be the line that you hold. So I don't, I think I'm okay with the idea of just going all the way up to twenty-four feet. That's kind of a compromise. Not totally sure why you couldn't have somewhat of a slope on that, maybe reduce the degree of the slope so that it just doesn't present so intensely at three stories? Maybe there's like a compromise on your slope?
Well, the original building actually had a skirt that came across, I mean, the roof itself comes down at the rear of the building and it has a hip on the top also, which sort of cuts the height down. It's sort of a Dutch dorm, or Dutch hip, a modified hip.
Yeah, oh, I see, like the front does.
Like the front.
Yeah.
So the idea of having this child live in a room where it's going to be a sloping ceiling for the rest of its existence, cutting back the four feet, the loss of the four feet on the second floor and the third floor, at least having a walkable, a normal bedroom up there for the child that will be using it, I think is a fair compromise and it will present itself to the rear as the rest. In fact, the buildings in the neighborhood on that block, there's one on the street that has a greenhouse, he's got a twenty-foot rear yard with a greenhouse and a three-story. It's within a hundred feet of the corner because it's on Avenue L, I think. But.
But it's a green, it's a greenhouse, so it's only one story.
It's one story, but we do have a twenty-foot setback with a three-story building and that's on Avenue K, that's twenty-one fifteen Avenue K. I think from the photographs, you can see that these buildings are quite large from when they were constructed. That's the reason the special permit is in this neighborhood.
So, so at the front of the building, you have this, you have a dormer at the top floor, right?
Yes.
Could you do the same kind of thing with the dormer, it reduces the apparent mask of the building at the rear?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
If you just did a match, then that would be.
Yeah, the room doesn't take up the whole, obviously.
Right, it's just for the windows to be vertical, you call them walk-up windows?
That we could walk up to the window.
Yeah.
That it's not a, that's going to hit you in the head.
Okay.
That would be fine as far as I'm concerned. I would obviously have to talk to my clients.
Right, everybody else all right with that?
Well, personally, I would accept the current plans, but we need consensus.
So you'd set it back at the third floor, then come up and match?
We'll set the second and third floor back to twenty-four-foot rear yard, but instead of sloping the roof at the rear so it looks like a two-story, it would present itself as a three-story, but with a dormer set into the roof.
Got you. So it actually presents more like an attic with a dormer as opposed to a third story? Right. Okay. That's what. Okay, that's good.
Thank you. I would need, I guess, maybe three weeks.
Are there any speakers on this? What's today, three weeks? One, two, three. Okay, so can you submit May 14th?
Yes.
Or actually, yeah, right, for a hearing on June 2nd, okay?
Thank you very much.
Item number nine, 17114A, 17214BZ, 235 Dixon Avenue, Staten Island.
Hello, Steven Simicich for the applicant. I was at review session yesterday, it seemed that the only concern at this time, rightfully so, was the sidewalk alignment on this site along Granite Avenue, so I spoke with the architect about two options to rectify it, and guess whichever one is preferred, we can go pursue. Instead of this sharp abutment that comes out here, there's about 45 feet of lawn area there that can be utilized to gradually connect the sidewalk at a lot less extreme angle and then reach, you know, a point along Granite where then it could flow along till Dixon Avenue, so it would not be that abutment that comes out right there, and.
So you would pick up from that point and have another point and then gradually?
Just very, yeah, because now there's, there's 45 feet there to gradually connect instead of this awkward abutment that just kind of sticks out right there. And I was just wondering on the board's thoughts about that. And just to rectify some of those issues, as far as walking along the sidewalk, it would be a lot more gradual to then approach a point where it will go straight to Dixon.
Well, I know the DOT requested alignment of the sidewalk in their letter, and I don't know if they've approved or looked at your builder's pavement plan.
Yeah.
And made any comments.
Well.
So I would like to know what they would, they would.
Haven't heard anything.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything, and of course, either one of these options, the builder's pavement plan would have to be revised to, I guess, fit both of them. And then the, the other option, of course, is to shift the building, which I know had been mentioned multiple times, three feet towards the side yard and then we would leave the sidewalk, would then, you know, would it be able to.
Three feet towards the side yard and back?
Yes, back.
Because the whole idea is that the adjoining building or the adjacent property has a, has a building that's sort of on an angle.
Yes.
So when you push it back, you maintain the 10-foot distance or improve even.
And then by only doing three feet, we would still have two feet of side yard for our lot, which would allow a ladder or something to be put down without having to infringe on the neighboring lot there.
And then you would have the aligned sidewalk and a planting strip.
Well, the planting strip might not, I would have to see what comes up in the.
Well, the planting strip is on the rest of the block.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, I see what you're saying. I was talking about the long granite itself in the builder's pavement plan, I don't think a planting strip is gonna be able to fit if with that, with that scenario where the sidewalk goes completely straight towards Dixon.
But I think on the adjacent property, there's a sidewalk and a planting strip, and if you just.
Oh, you're talking about on Dixon, along Dixon?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, I was thinking, I was thinking about along Granite where the sidewalk will go straight along.
Dixon is the long.
Yeah, which one is the long dimension, granite?
The long dimension is granite.
No, the adjacent home on Granite has a sidewalk and a planting strip.
Okay, okay, yeah.
That's the goal, is to match that.
Yeah, to match that sidewalk, but I'm just saying that once the sidewalk goes straight along Granite to Dixon, where our property is, there will be, I don't think, room for a planting strip in that scenario. If we're kind of trying to keep the sidewalk to go, then the building will probably butt very close to that sidewalk there.
You're talking about you'd, you'd rather make a larger front yard?
Well, no, it's either, it's whatever, either option, like I said, if we keep it.
Well, if you keep whatever is in the adjacent home on Granite.
Yes.
And you continue that down, that's one option.
Yes.
The other option is putting a jog in the sidewalk.
Putting, yeah, a lot slighter or gradual jog, which then will allow for a little more, actual, some, some lawn area on the front along Granite. As opposed to the other option, I see that if we shift the, shift the building to the neighboring lot, in order to align the sidewalk from Granite all the way straight to Dixon, then the building will be very close to that sidewalk there.
Which was kind of in line with some of the photos that you gave us.
Yeah, yeah, some of the photos have no lawn at all, for sure, that, you know, between the sidewalk and the, and the property itself. Other ones did have some small lawn area. So it's either of these options that we can, we can pursue and.
I mean, the, the ideal is to have the sidewalk be continuous.
Okay, yeah, well, then that would entail shifting.
So you should look at shifting the house both towards, towards both of its side lot lines effectively.
Okay.
Right, so back from Dixon and along parallel to Dixon.
Yeah, so going three feet to the neighboring lot and in order to allow the sidewalk to just keep continually connect without any sort of budding out or.
And the reason for the back is maybe you'll clear the adjoining house or get closer to a, clear the adjoining house.
Okay.
And I'm not sure what the width of the planting strip is on the adjacent property, but you might be able to fit some street trees then, on Granite.
Along that widening area maybe, I mean, along the lawn area, not necessarily where the building is, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, along the lawn.
So, yeah, well, see when the.
Planting strip.
When, yeah, when the builder's pavement plan is revised, we'll see if that planting strip can fit any there. But I just think that from the looks of the other builder's pavement plan, it might not be able to, we would have to provide the trees elsewhere. But I guess if we're revising the plans here, we'll have to also revise the BPP and then we'll see if any trees can be there.
Any other, anything, any speakers on this? Okay, so, any idea?
I mean. Sorry?
Three weeks, something like that.
Yeah, three weeks should be, definitely be enough.
For submission.
Yeah, for submission. Being that we'd have to get a new, you'll be objection now for we're gonna be going into the side yard, correct?
This is a variance also.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes, it would.
Yeah, so we'll have to, so three weeks, that way we could get that and then revise the plans and the BPP, and the statement of facts and findings, of course, also.
Okay, so maybe we should, you could do a, let's see. So that would be a submission on May 14th, is that too soon?
No, no, that's fine.
For a hearing on June 2nd. Okay.
Okay.
Item number 10, 23814BZ, 98100 Franklin Street, Manhattan.
Okay, we wanted to adjourn this, or they wanted to adjourn this till next week? The submission was already made, okay.
We will resume at 1 o'clock for new cases, correct?
Yes.